Amendment number fourteen is now called to order. This is July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. It is five thirty PM and we are in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Kathleen, can we do a roll call, please?
Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
McCambell?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have a presentation for our beloved Nancy. She always comes bearing gifts, Nancy.
Thank you very much. Actually, I've got a couple of things.
All right.
First of all, your team across the board is doing a great job engaging. We've had several opportunities this year. The largest one was with that beautiful remodel job for the police station. We set that project up at the beginning, worked with them right through all their design phase, and resulting was a nice check.
Yay.
Chief, would you receive this one? They don't want to trouble you to give me a picture. Would you mind?
Yeah.
You look like somebody that knows how to work an envelope.
Oh, yeah.
That's great. Okay. There we have it. Eleven thousand, whoa!
Careful.
Watch your step, that step's kinda mean, you gotta watch it.
Two hundred and fifteen dollars. Yep, and the actual money's already in the bank. All right.
I guess it is.
Okay. And while we're still realizing some rebates here, I got a check for Nick McGregor. Yes, this was for the Central Avenue Streetlights.
Yes.
And, you know, the beautiful thing about these LEDs is they're really gonna help you save on maintenance as well. Four thousand, eleven dollars and forty-eight cents. Now, I got a magic marker and an eraser. Let me fix that up. You ready? Okay.
That checks outstanding.
And I'm just gonna keep rolling here.
Keep rolling, keep rolling.
I like what you're saying.
Really nice project that Rhonda's working on. Is she here with us tonight? Or is it the library?
There she is.
There she is.
Hiding.
Oh, hey, there you are. And actually, we're leveraging two programs. One is our Small Business Direct Install Program, and I was really glad that it was kind of a creative idea because you don't think of the library as being a small business, per se, but they do meet the criteria for usage and square footage. So, we're doing a direct install for, I'd say, the lion's share of her lighting retrofit. And then there was just a little specialized piece that we're doing with the custom rebate to help her maximize everything. And as soon as those installs are done, we'll be back with another check. And then, there's one more lighting project. It's special, it's for the Highway Thirty-four Bridge. They've got some great design ideas, and that will qualify for a rebate, but from what I understand, the committee is still in a fundraising phase, so anything that they can do to, you know, get some support behind that would be great, but they're not leaving any stone unturned for that as well. And lastly, I always love it, Tracy McCambell says, "We keep secrets from ourselves." And I found on this item on the agenda tonight that you have a contract for the Port of Burlington Heating and Cooling Unit, and I'm gonna leave this with Nick, and if there's any of the specs that line up with the rebates for what the unit has been selected, then we might be able to get a little something back on that, too.
Sweet, sweet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, you forgot my check. I quit sleeping with the night light on.
Oh, all right.
What we'll talk about after the meeting.
This one, okay.
All right. Nancy, thank you very much for coming down, and we always look forward to seeing you. She always has good news for us. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One, consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have two resolutions. The first is a resolution awarding contract for the two thousand and eighteen Port of Burlington Heating and Cooling Unit, Nancy just brought that up. And the second is a resolution awarding the bid for complete production and delivery of the two thousand and nineteen Type One ambulance for the Burlington Fire Department. Is there anybody that would like to have any of these items removed? I see none. Counsel?
No.
No.
Your honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under the Item One Consent Agenda.
A second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we have a, we have some properties for sale tonight, and so it is time for consideration of sale of property locally known as one thousand and three Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tinsel.
This property is located at one thousand and three Chalfont. It's located on the west side of Chalfont, just south of Mount Pleasant, to the east of Dome Land. It's a very long and narrow lot, approximately thirty-five feet wide by three hundred and nine feet long. This is the property spec on the home, built around nineteen hundred, one-story, two-bedroom, one full bath, again, thirty-five by three oh nine foot lot. Does need to be cleaned out, plumbing upgrades is necessary, electrical and HVAC upgrades is necessary, foundation work may be necessary, porches, deck repairs, repairs needed, roof repairs needed. So, in typical condition of the properties that we acquire, it does need a lot of work in order to be habitable. This work would have to be done before someone could live in the house and before we transfer deed, it would need to be substantially complete, especially the plumbing, electric work on the property. Purchaser must ensure the property receives permits and meets codes for renovation as necessary. Again, licensed electrician and plumber required to inspect and sign off that such items meet or are brought up to code. Improvement shall be initiated within sixty days and completed within a hundred and eighty days of approval by the council with an extension of a hundred and eighty days granted. Continued progress is being made. If someone's working on it, we wanna make sure they have that chance to continue work on it. But if they do not work on it, then forfeiture of the purchase and payment may occur if those timeframes aren't met. Currently for Chalfont, we have one bid in the amount of five hundred dollars from Patrick Smith.
All right, we're gonna start the, open up the auction for one thousand and three Chalfont Street. This is gonna make a lovely home, and for those that, for those that like privacy, it kinda sets back, and it's at a great location, right next to Chick's Upholstery, so you can get some furniture done, really cheap.
No, we don't do furniture.
Somebody's got a bad attitude back there. How you doing? Good to see ya. Okay, we're gonna open up the bid. It has started at five hundred dollars to Patrick Smith. If anybody else has another bid, we're gonna ask that you come to the podium and give us your name and address, and then give us your bid. To that podium, sir? Just give us your, give us your name and address and what your bid is. Oh, sir, I'm sorry, I'm not making, that's my fault, I'm not making myself clear. Go to the podium there.
Right there.
Yeah, and just, you don't need ID or anything like that, we'll deal with that later. Just tell us your name.
My name's Jeff Holstein, and I live at five oh seven Burn Street, West Burton, Iowa.
Can you spell that last name for me, Jeff? Okay. And what, and that address was?
It's five oh seven Burn Street, West Burton, Iowa.
Okay.
And four oh one oh seven.
And what is your bid tonight?
Six hundred.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. So, you have a bid at six hundred, do I have a bid for a thousand?
Patrick Smith at thirteen oh three South Central, I wanted to go eight hundred.
Okay. We have a bid at eight hundred, do I have a bid for a thousand? I see who's coming. You have a bid for twenty-five hundred, sir?
No, no. Kevin Kerr, we'll go a thousand.
Can I get your address, sir?
Sixteen hundred Valley, Burlington.
And your bid is?
Thousand dollars.
We've got a high bid of a thousand, yes, sir?
At twelve.
We have Patrick Smith at twelve hundred. Do I have a, do I have a higher bid, going at twelve hundred? This place has a lot of privacy, I'll tell you what, it really has two entrances, front end, front end, alleyway.
Fourteen.
We have a bid from Kevin Kerr for fourteen hundred dollars. Yes, sir?
Fifteen.
Patrick Smith at fifteen hundred, this is getting exciting, kids.
Oh.
We've got Patrick Smith at fifteen hundred. Do I have a higher bid? Yes, sir?
Sixteen.
Jeff Holstein at sixteen hundred. Jeff Holstein, yes, sir?
Seventeen.
Seventeen hundred for Patrick Smith?
Eighteen.
Eighteen for Mr. Holstein? Eighteen for Mr., hold on, let me write this down. We have eighteen for Mr. Holstein?
Nineteen.
We have nineteen hundred for Kevin Kerr, do I have a bid of two thousand? It's gonna be a lovely home. Somebody's gonna be awfully happy with this. Do I have a bid of two thousand? We have a two thousand dollar bid for Jeff Holstein, twenty-one? Seriously?
You got another problem.
The bid is at two thousand for Jeff Holstein? Two thousand, going once? Two thousand twice? Okay, we appreciate everybody bidding. This property is sold to Jeff Holstein for two thousand bucks.
Your honor, I move to, how do I do this, Kathleen?
Need to close the hearing.
Close the hearing and vote to close.
A second.
Can I get, do we get a motion to close?
Yes.
Yes. Sorry why you were, Phillips, aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a, hold on here, boss.
Introduce the resolution first.
Okay. I introduce the amendment?
No, the resolution.
The resolution. Okay, your honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as one thousand and three Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Second. Now, the amendment.
Now, okay, now, your honor, sorry, the first time, folks, for me.
You're doing it.
I have a, an amendment to the motion to sell the property at one thousand and three, I'm lost on this, Chalfont Street to Jeff Holstein for two thousand, is that correct?
Okay, a second.
Second.
Moved in second, let's vote.
Okay, this is on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Now, yeah, let's go as amended.
Now, your honor, as amended.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done. This house has been sold to Mr. Holstein for two thousand dollars. Thank you for your time, appreciate you coming down. Let me give you one of these. I only give these to the cool kids, that's for you, my friend. Won't get you out of trouble or anything, but you can have it all, Steve. Okay, we've got a note property to sell. This is time for consideration of a sale of property locally known as nine eighteen Locust Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tinsel.
This property is located at the corner of Locust and Tenth Street. It is a residential property. Lot approximately fifty-three by eighty-eight, a two-story brick building, three-bedroom, one and a half bath. It is a single-family home with home occupation possible, but based on the zoning, it would be a single-family home and could have a home occupation of the property, but would not be allowed as a commercial-only property. Just looks a little unique, but it is zone residential. Again, similar conditions, needs a licensed plumber and electrician to ensure that the property meets or is brought up to current code standards. All renovation work would be needed to be done and brought up to code prior to occupancy and substantial completion prior to transfer of deed to the property. All permits and codes shall be met as applicable for work and occupancy of the home. Again, work shall be initiated within sixty days and completed within a hundred and eighty days of approval by the council with an extension of a hundred and eighty days. Currently, we have one bid on the property, Kyle Islami, for a thousand dollars.
Okay. We have Kyle Islami, fifteen thirty-seven Lincoln Street, with a thousand dollar bid. We wanna open up this auction. This is for nine eighteen Locust Street. This is, this has a lot of promise. I'll tell you what, it's gonna make somebody a lovely property, looking forward to this. Do I have another bid?
We have to get out.
Could you, could you give me your name, please? No, I got your name. Would you like to put a bid in, sir?
All right.
Kevin Kerr. Who's your address again, Kevin?
Sixteen hundred.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a high bid of twelve hundred dollars, do I have another bid tonight? A high bid of twelve hundred dollars, another bid tonight? Yes, sir?
Sixteen hundred.
Can I have you come and give me your?
Yeah.
Kyle Islami at fifteen thirty-seven Lincoln.
That's Kyle. And what, give me that bid, was it fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
Okay, we have Mr. Islami at fifteen hundred, do I have a higher bid?
Seventeen.
Seventeen hundred for Mr. Kerr. Seventeen hundred is our high bid?
Two thousand.
Two thousand for Mr. Islami? Two thousand is our high bid, do I have a bid of three, thirty-five hundred?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two for Mr. Kerr.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred for Mr. Islami, thirty-five? Twenty-seven hundred for Mr. Kerr.
Three thousand.
Three thousand for Mr. Islami. He's got a lot of promise.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two hundred for Mr. Kerr.
Thirty-five.
We have a high bid of thirty-five hundred, Mr. Islami.
Thirty-seven.
High bid of thirty-seven hundred, Mr. Kerr.
Four hundred.
Our high bid is four thousand, Mr. Islami. Our high bid is four thousand, Mr. Islami, going once tonight? Going twice, this is gonna make somebody a lovely home. Going three times, it's going to make you a lovely, lovely home. Sold to Mr. Islami, four thousand.
Your honor, I have.
Forty-two.
In fact, did you close it out?
Don't, no, he beat me.
You didn't do that yet.
It's at forty-two. Well, keep it going until I shut her down, we're at forty-two, I'll wait on you, Mr. Islami.
Forty-five.
We're good at forty-five? Good at forty-five. All right, we're gonna shut her down at forty-five. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you so much.
Your honor, I have a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of a property locally known as nine eighteen Locust Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Moved in second.
I can amend it now? Okay, your honor, I have a motion to amend stating that we will sell the property in nine eighteen Locust for a price of forty-five hundred to Kyle Islami.
Okay, a second.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, now, let's vote as amended.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, well done. Mr. Islami, we appreciate you tonight. I gave one bracelet out, I'm gonna give you one, too. Don't get mad, it's like reading trees or something. Struggle. All right. Thank you, guys, for coming down. We also, Patrick Tookoff, we appreciate him as well, and thank you, Jeff. Okay, which brings us to number three. This is consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Historic Tama LLC for encroachment at the City Right-of-Way Adjacent to the property located at three hundred to three hundred and ten Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa.
I was just waiting for him to take the gentleman down. So, this is somewhat of a transfer of an existing encroachment agreement. We previously had an encroachment agreement with the former owner. They've since sold the building to Historic Tama LLC in their wanting substantially similar encroachment agreement. Our policy requires that new agreements be formed with the owners once a property is sold. They're looking for an encroachment on the east side of the building in Third Street Right-of-Way. There is a stairway that was previously opened up into the basement of that corner retail space or commercial space that has access to the basement area. The stairs are, they are currently under some wood, but they do need some railings, and this would be part of that, is stairway down coming from the north and south with some railings on the north and south, and then going down into that building as well. So, as I mentioned, this council previously approved an encroachment agreement with the former owner, so this is transferring to the new owner and entering into a new agreement with Historic Tama LLC with Doug Wells, manager.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none? Counsel?
No.
Good.
Move to close.
Second, moved in second, thank you, Mr. Rinker. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye. Your honor, I have a resolution approving a permanent encroachment agreement with Historic Tama LLC for encroachment into City Right-of-Way at three hundred through three ten Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second. Thank you, Kathleen. I kept, last week, I kept calling Katie Kathleen.
Oh, did you?
Anyway, yes. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Next is consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and eighteen Mason Road Shared Use Path Project. Mr. McGregor, how much was that check for, Nick?
Four thousand dollars.
I'll be talking to you after the meeting, I got a few things I need, but anyways, please continue.
So, the project in front of you is to approve plans and specs for the Mason Road Trail, which is a TAP grant from the DOT, Transportation Alternative Program grant money. And Eric can maybe talk to the specifics about it, but what it entails, a ten-foot-wide shared use path from the end of Sequoia, where there's currently a trail, to Haskell, where it meets up with adjoining previous sidewalk, forty-eight foot, or forty-eight foot, forty-eight inches wide. So, not, that's a pretty good-sized sidewalk, that's a road.
Forty foot.
This is a, if you go to the next slide, I think it has a schedule on there, this is a DOT let project, you just have a map, don't you? That's all I gave you. This is a DOT let project, so we're not letting this locally. We have a September letting date on this. The project estimate is at a hundred and, hang on there, I'm not gonna say it, 'cause I don't know what it is. Two hundred, well, I was gonna be off, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar estimated project. It's an eighty-twenty match project, so you see that we received bids on the eighteenth, so that'll be done in Ames, and then we'll go through the similar process that we've gone through with the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge and then Mount Pleasant Street HMA project, so. The funding source behind it is a TAP grant, and Eric can maybe attest what, I think it was.
This was applied for about four years ago, so it, just based on the lead time, is around the construction of the school at that time, based on the school being there and some of the neighborhood factors, that's why we're awarded the funds. It's just that delay in the availability of funds, why it's now being constructed. But we do have programmed this in the CIP, the last, it's been in the CIP since applied for, and with that local money.
Nick, is there any chance that the letting date gets moved up, so we've got a path in place?
There's not.
The weather will.
This is a, this is a standard DOT schedule of you, you pick, so you pick your date, and you have a lot of check plans, you have an environmental, you have archaeological, you have things that you have to jump through to get to the DOT. And so, approving these plans and specs is just part of the process. So, we had easements go through two weeks ago, and so that's something else, so it's all through the DOT hopper of trying to get things let, so. This, the fifteenth is, the eighteenth is pretty firm. If anything, should something go wrong in the submittal process, it would be bumped back.
Any other questions for Nick? Any questions from the audience? I see none? Get a motion to close.
I moved to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye. Your honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the two thousand and eighteen Mason Road Shared Use Path Project.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Well done, getting her done. Number five, consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and eighteen Deedwin and Gladys White Park renovations. Mr. McGregor? two thousand eighteen De Edwin and Gladys White Park renovations. Mr. McGregor.
This project is something that has come from the Parks Department, our engineering department, has went over some plans to help with grading and then there's some sewer structure, infrastructure that's in the ground there, we kinda talked about that last week, I don't really know what the future of that infrastructure will be, most of it is in the grassed area that we would have to access should we have to, it's all, it's mostly grading work and then some asphalt removal, I don't know if there was an estimate on that.
Yeah, I was gonna, just show the sewer work, the design of the playground and the improvements that we made there, been efforts to avoid any sewer work, should anything need to be removed, it would be in that, primarily in that grassy area, so...
As you can see, the matrix of sewer lines, both combined and storm sewer is fairly complex through that, through that neighborhood, the yellow or orange is the combined and then the green is storm water.
The discussions with Chris Clements and Jesse Howe has been that there may not be any removal in that pla, that area as well, and so it might not be affected at all, but if there is some removal that we would plan accordingly, not install infrastructure or project areas over those sewers.
Sounds good. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none? Counsel?
Second.
Motion to close.
Second. Moved in second, Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the two thousand eighteen De Edwin and Gladys White Park renovations.
Second. Moved in second, let's vote, Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Moving right along, resolutions.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the twenty eighteen Public Works Roof Replacement Project.
Second.
I guess I should get back up, I was sitting there waiting for it, the resolution in front of you would award contract for the Public Works Roof to Brockway Mechanical in the amount of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, six, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, this project has worked its way into needing to be done, the roof was done with the building of the, with it in two thousand and one, so the roof is about seventeen years old, ideally you wouldn't want to replace a roof every seventeen years, it is a ballasted roof, we are going away from that, this is a TPO roof, so a rubber roof, for the lack of a better term, it'll be white, so they'll remove the current roof, the current rock, and then they'll take off the rubber underneath of that and then they will install the new roof.
What's the life expectancy of this one?
I think they have twenty-year warranty on that, so I, the previous roof was a ten-year warranted roof, so it did, outlived its expected warranty, but still you would all have to replace a roof every seventeen years, the funding source for this is road use tax and sewer fund, split fifty-fifty, the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six fifty, along with engineering fees, puts it at pretty close to the budgeted about dollar figure. So, it's nice to see it come under bid, but with engineering fees incorporated into it, it does come close to its budgeted amount, so...
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, counsel?
So Nick, with the white color, is that supposed to be better for cooling, not necessarily for heating?
It does help with heat, but in the same role, in the winter, you would rather have the heat to get the snow melted.
So it's probably...
It helps some in the winter, or in the summer months.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the twenty eighteen eleven oh six Washington Street Drainage Improvements. Need a second?
Second.
The resolution here would award contract to Phi Excavating in the amount of ninety-one thousand, seventy-eight dollars and thirteen cents, this project is a drainage project along with installation of a storm sewer intake in the former dress ran site, which is something we had, as the city, taken on a couple of years ago and removed all the concrete, with the removal of that concrete, trying to get grade to meet exactly with previous contract wasn't, wasn't part of it, so, this is something to try and correct the drainage problem that you see on the, I would say southwest section of that property, but to the west of the railroad tracks.
Nick, I don't remember seeing this in the budget, was this something that...
This is not a budgeted project, it'll come out of the miscellaneous sewer funds.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, counsel? Gotta get her done, okay, Kathleen, let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, nice to have it, number three.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the twenty eighteen Patterson Street Erosion Repair Project.
Second.
Second twice, thanks both of you, Mr. McGregor.
The resolution here would award bid for the Patterson Street Erosion Improvements to Phi Excavating in the amount of seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents, this project has been a long thing coming, it, the first, the problem was created during a heavy rain event in the fall of two thousand and sixteen, causing the road to slough off fairly severely, we therefore closed the road, to fix this problem, we looked at several different options, gabion wall or retaining wall, all of those being fairly expensive in the hundred and fifty to hundred and eighty thousand bracket, we then had purchased the property on the bottom side of the hill in hopes that we could grade the property, and that's what we're doing here, so with the thirty-five thousand dollar purchase of that property, along with the seventy-two thousand, or seventy-one thousand and change in this award, along with engineering fees, we're still well underneath what that threshold would have been with the, with the other projects, so, I think we're, you know, barring any major findings in the clearing and grubbing, this project is, will save us quite a bit of money from the other alternatives.
The only maintenance upkeep is just grass, cutting grass, that's about it?
Yeah, I would say maybe a couple of times a year would make sense, I don't know what, I don't know what the seed and the spec is called, but...
Thank you, sir, any questions from the audience? I see none, it's been lovely tonight, alright, counsel?
Nick, the only thing I'd say with that project is, does it make more sense to try and go with some type of foliage like an evergreen that doesn't require that much maintenance, just like a thick urban forest area versus continuously cutting grass?
Something forestry could look at as far as plantings after it's complete as a separate project, I know we have funds for trees periodically through our tree planting, but that might be the best bet is talking, working with forestry on that as well.
So we seed it now to keep erosion under control, then look at that later?
Well, I would think that the best way to probably do it would be to try and seed it in natural or native grasses, not intended to be cut, let to grow to its specific height, they do grow relatively tall, but they also have root systems that hold hillsides in place fairly well, it's just, I don't know that it needs to be mowed, I mean, it's kind of out of sight, but, I mean, there's a lot of hillsides that we don't maintain that are city-owned properties.
My only point was that that was going to be the only thing pretty much that we would have to do to it, is maybe cut the grass once over, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments from the audience? Counsel? Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, number four.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving distribution of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funds for parking spaces at greater Burlington area sports facilities, indoor turf project adjacent, rather, to the recplex.
Second.
Thank you.
Counsel had previously committed five hundred thousand out of the sale of the manor property proceeds to go towards parking infrastructure out at the, adjacent to the We had looked at the different portions that we could accomplish getting some parking done and then sidewalk interconnections for that, in that five hundred thousand dollar range, the yellow area, when we put some engineer estimates together for, which is what the, now the indoor rec facility group is looking to incorporate within their project, we had an estimated, estimated price of construction on that, I can't read the number really well, three sixty...
Three sixty-one.
Three hundred and sixty-one thousand to do that piece. We also look to do the gray area on the west side area E with an estimated cost about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and then to do some sidewalk interconnects on the two ends, and I don't know what the price point that you had on that, but what we'd be looking to transfer over for responsibility for construction to the indoor rec facility group would be those sidewalk interconnections on the east side of the road, what would be on their property, as well as the yellow highlighted area they'd go ahead and take care of in this initial phase, we'd be transferring over three hundred and fifty thousand, which is a little less than what our engineer's estimate would, was to, to perform those, those functions, and then we would essentially kind of wipe ourselves out of that, that side of the work, it'd still leave the hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the sidewalk or the parking area and then our portion of the sidewalk interconnects to the west of the future constructed extension of South, South Broadway? Makes sense in terms of where your commitments have been to go ahead and transfer those duties over, the, the indoor rec facility will still need the shared usage agreement for parking with the indoor rec facility, we've already agreed to do that in previous resolutions, but this will certainly meet the parking needs that they had with, well, once you incorporate that shared usage arrangement with, that we've already done, and this, looking at what we're accomplishing here as that project moves forward, it's, it will enhance the parking that we have available in their off-seasons as well for usage of the outdoor recplex, just based off of where your past agreements have been and consideration, it makes sense to move forward with this.
So this, the three fifty's going for the yellow portion, and we are using the other one fifty to go towards the gray portion?
Correct.
In the future.
Okay, any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none, counsel? Okay, let's vote, Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Okay, number five.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving purchase of a brush chipper for the Parks Department.
Second.
Thank you both.
We did post this for bid, which includes a brush chipper, as well as a trade-in of two thousand and seven, older brush chipper and an older tree spade, did receive bid in a budgeted amount of seventy-five thousand dollars from Vermeer Sales in service of Tipton, Iowa, and staff would recommend moving forward with that bid. And that, that meets the budgeted amount that we had for the project.
Any concerns from the audience? I see none, counsel? Gotta get her done, let's do this, Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Number six.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving rare rig Pacific for carts for solid waste program?
Second.
You wanna put up that first? I'd like to go through these real quick, just as an overview, this is, of course, in regards to the solid waste program and the move to switch from the current manual collection of thirty-three gallon containers, cans and bags, to a cart program, and ultimately beginning with cart tippers and possibly moving to fully automated collection of garbage and trash in the city of Burlington. If we stay on a timetable that's laid out for us, today, if you pass the resolution that we're talking about now in the second resolution, there will be a purchase order that we would be issuing tomorrow to the contractor, and they will be using a list provided by us that came from the water department, and send out a mailer survey to each of the addresses that are serviced by the solid waste program, and actually it will go to the address that the bill for the services is sent to, in some cases, the landlords receive the bill for properties that they own, manage, oversee, and they will be the ones that would be selecting the container size, using the mailer, it'll be drop-in-the-mail type thing returned to the contractor, or it can also, will have a connection on the city's website which will allow them, a person to go on the internet and register their choice on the internet, that should start the process tomorrow with a purchase order, and I'm being told that they believe by August thirteenth, Monday, that that mailer survey will be live, it will be sent out, it'll be available on the internet, and that by September seventh, Saturday, they would look at closing the choice, the opportunity to select the size of the cart that you wish to have, and then assemble the order based on the expressed choices, and then September twenty-fourth, they feel they'll be in the position to actually deliver the carts to the city of Burlington, start the distribution, and by Saturday, October sixth, they will have all of the carts delivered to the service addresses, and it would be completed, okay, next one. Again, the program that the council indicated they wanted to see were the choice of, from three size containers, the thirty-five gallon, the sixty-five gallon, and the ninety-five gallon, those who fail or choose not to return their choice, absent a reply, the contractor will then assign to the service address a sixty-five gallon cart, and that is what would be delivered during those, that two-week period, next slide. Okay, I wanted to put this up here because we want to make it very clear, the intent, one of the intents was to, for aesthetics, appearance within the community, to try to reduce nuisances, the can on the right shows the lid is open, it's got bags that's sticking up above the lip of the can, and that will not be acceptable, we will not collect that can, the one on the left, the lid is completely closed, aesthetically pleasing, not likely for an animal to get into it, less likely to have loose material blowing out of it, and so that's our target, is what you have on the left side, that's very important for people to keep in mind as they're making their selection, this happens to be the thirty-five gallon can, but the same thing holds true whether you have a sixty-five gallon can, cart, I should use the word cart, or the ninety-five, the same thing, we don't want this snow cone type condition, we want the lid completely closed, and it should be closed by the resident, they're the ones, if they feel, well, that should fit in the cart, well, then they should push it down in the cart so the lid is completely closed, okay, the next slide, please. So, to help the citizens have an opportunity to see and make their choice, we have three cart inspection sites, actually, we've set one up late, earlier today, this afternoon, next slide, the first one, which we set up this afternoon, is at the Public Works Building in their lobby out at thirty-five ten Division Street, the parking lot entrance that they should use to go into the parking lot for the Public Works Building is point one five miles west of the Roosevelt intersection, they do have visitor parking, parking immediately in front of the front door, and they can go inside there and they can look at the three carts, they have some bags in there, there's also an informational sheet there that I'd encourage them to pick up, tape with them, we've had people come down to the wastewater plant with a tape measure to actually measure the carts to see what type of footprint that it requires, if they want to put it inside a garage next to a car or something like that, they want to see, will it fit where I'd like to put it, the, one of the informational sheets that are available have those dimensions on it, so they need not bring a tape measure if they don't want to, next slide, second site will be the public library in the lobby at two ten Court Street, we're setting those up tomorrow morning, we'll probably have that set up by eleven o'clock tomorrow morning at the latest, and the third site is going to be at the wastewater treatment plant, a little bit harder to get to, we're on the riverfront, we're down there by the railroad bridge, and we have a circular parking lot in front of a little concrete fort-like looking building, one of the benefits of maybe going there over the others, although it is harder to get to, is that we have a ramp sidewalk that goes up and enters the building, so if you have a sloped driveway at your home, it'll help you kind of simulate going up and down your driveway or your walk, we also have four concrete stairs, and then lastly, we are the ones that probably know the most about the pro- And then lastly, we are the ones that probably know the most about the program and putting it together, so if they want to talk to me directly or to my office coordinator, we're located at that address. They'll also, of course, of course, could call us if they'd like to talk to us on the phone about. Is there any more? Is that the last one? That's the last one? Okay. So, first resolution that you have before you is for the purchase of containers, as well as for them to come with the ordered carts, assemble them, and make the delivery based on the results of the survey and the list that we provide them. And that is what the first resolution is for.
Sounds good. You're very thorough. Thank you, Don. Does anybody have any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none? Counsel? Oh, yes ma'am.
One of these larger cans?
Can I, can I have you come to the podium, please? That's just the rules that we have down here, and if you give us your name and address.
Will the larger cans be harder to handle?
Kind of your name and address, please.
Betty Jobe, 507 West, 507 Vernon Street, apartment 209, West Burlington, Iowa.
Okay. Ms. Betty? What's your question?
I was wanting to know the different sizes in the cans, are they going to be manageable for the people that have to wheel them out?
They're going to be on wheels?
If some little 80-pound lady can she get down?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, he addressed that because he said his mother had, I'll let you, would you like to?
Mom, my mom has a 95-gallon can, she's, sorry, Mom, 75, and she has a 100-foot-long driveway that's got a slope to it. She wheels it right down, wheels it right back. Not a problem. It's easier than it was with a can without wheels.
Sounds like a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that question. I'm sure somebody else probably had it, too.
That's really part of the reason that, Don, with the three different locations, you've put some level of simulated garbage in the containers.
Right. We've, we've put some bags of various types of material inside the carts to enable people to not only get a feel for, being able to see the size of the cart, but also imagine it's got some weight in it. The bags are removable, if they wish to take out a few bags, just to see, there may be more weight in the cart than what they would normally have. You can mix and match the bags if you choose to do so, but yeah, there is some weight in the cart, so one can see that.
Good deal.
There you go.
Sounds good. Any other questions from the audience? I see none? Counsel?
Nope. I think it's great that people get an opportunity to actually see firsthand what they look like, what they feel like, because there are a lot of fears out there and concerns anytime we change something up on people. I think that's an awesome idea. Thanks, Don.
And, Don, I heard reports that you were doing a mixture of blue and gold for the carts.
I, I did have a request by a citizen if they could be, a cart could be provided in blue and gold. I, I don't know what school or university that color represents.
I guarantee it was somebody that had issues, that was the, that was the deal.
I, I did ask if they could do black, black and gold, and of course, then there's the cyclones, but I thought there might be a lot of chicanery and a lot of things going on with people's competition.
You think so?
And actually, the cart manufacturer said they did not think that was a good idea.
All right. Counsel, we good?
Good.
Good. I would just like to remind everybody that if you don't fill out the survey, you default at the 65, and I would also like to remind those that occur, or, that's what I'm looking for, accumulate a lot of trash. You probably seriously want to go 65 or 95, you'll, I think it'll be a big regret if you don't, so I'm encouraging everybody, go big Burlington. Kathleen? Let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving rare-ic Pacific for survey coordination and processing proposal for the solid waste program.
Second.
Second. Don?
Okay, and this is the resolution that is covering the company in performing or preparing the survey, the mailer. They'll be working with us over the next couple of weeks to get the right language and appearance on there, clarity, and again, we'll be providing them with the list of service addresses where the cart would ultimately be delivered to, as well as the mailing address where the bill goes to, assuming that, we're assuming that the place that pays the bill would be the one that would make the decision on what size the cart is going to be. And this resolution covers that service of sending out the mailer, accumulating the information, and assembling the order, the different cart sizes that will be needed.
Don, I have one question pertaining to the color. What color have you elected to move forward with? The green or the blue? Do we try to create a can that stands out from cans that are being used by?
Well, that, I, I don't know, and I guess, I don't know that that decision has to be made at this meeting. They have various colors available. The programs that I've seen out throughout various areas, it typically seems like the more colorful colors are usually associated with the recycling program or something to that effect. In my, my way of thinking, you're going to want some kind of muted color, some kind of neutral color. Brown is a basic color for carts and/or lids. Black is that way, and also the forest green. We do have a blue cart that's out there, it was just that they had a blue cart available for us to set up, but that was not intended to say we're going to get blue carts. There are a number of colors from which we can choose from, can be the same cart in-lid color, or it can be different. I was thinking either brown or green.
What about mahogany?
A black color.
What about mahogany?
And it's our intent to put the city logo on the side of the cart, whether that's enough to be a distinguishing factor from the commercial haulers, containers. They have trash containers out there, as well as they have containers out there for the yard waste program, and I think they use both the brown, basic color, and they also have the dark green color. I just envision whether they're sitting in the alley, or whether they're next to their garage, you know, a bright color is, I mean, bright colors are fine and such, but I would think you would look for a more muted color combination if you can.
I'd agree. I just figured I'd ask, because I didn't know that was a conversation that's already been had.
Yeah, I, I think that person asking for the blue and gold was not really thinking about how other people might feel about that color being at their house.
Or maybe that person was emotionally unstable, but we'll, we'll get down to the bottom of it later. So, are we good, guys?
I had a, I had a question, Don, on the, on the mailer. We, correct me if I'm wrong, we are charged 40 cents for every mailer that's returned?
It was on one of those forms, I think, that.
I remember reading that. Is it fair, or would it be fair to say, save the city 40 cents if you don't return your mailer, you automatically get the 65 if that's the size that you want? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out.
Well, I, the company has indicated they get about a 50% participation rate. My understanding is most cities would kill for a 50% participation rate in a survey, but I suspect it could very well be that those, some of those people, they, they're happy with the default size, which in this case is a 65, so they don't bother to send it in.
From the city perspect, from, from our perspective of anybody who feels like they want to be able to weigh in and, and get that back in, turned in, we're more than happy to pay the 40 cents.
Okay.
Any other questions? And we're good in the audience?
How much do the cans cost?
Okay. Did you, didn't we just, oh, I don't think we had that slide, did we?
No.
We haven't, we haven't approved.
I have.
We haven't, we haven't officially approved that schedule, but tentatively.
I have the proposed rates.
Here, I have.
I was going to say what the actual.
Well, depends, depends on how many cans of which size?
Right. Well, I don't think there's a, like a price break.
At the, as indicated, the next, I think it will be the next full, the official council meeting, you'll be perhaps looking at a resolution that will establish the rates, and that needs to be done, and that would be included on the mailer. If people are going to select a size of cart, they're going to want to know what that size of cart's going to cost. This is on one of the, on the informational sheet that's available at the sites where the carts are to take a look at, and this is based on earlier conversations and discussions at council work sessions, and if I got to have that correct, currently, the rates went up for the current 33-gallon can or cart from $14 a month to $14.25 a month. The council indicated they wish that fee to remain the same for the 35-gallon cart, so that 14.25 is what the customers are paying now for the 33-gallon and the tag program we have. If they choose the 35-gallon cart, it will remain the same, $14.25. That's, as I understand, the proposed. The next proposal was for the, make the 65-gallon 17.50 a month, or in other words, $3.25 more a month to step up to the next size. And then the same thing is true from stepping up from the 65 to the 95, is another $3.25. There is also, there are some residents out there, customers, that may actually wish to have a second cart to take them beyond either the 95 or the 65, and the recommendation, the proposal was to make it $8 for an extra 65-gallon cart, and $12 for an extra 95-gallon cart. And I want to make a note that the above fees already include the $3.75 per month for the recycling program, so if you wanted to see what your trash program is costing you, you would look at those proposed monthly fees and actually subtract 3.75 for the recycling to get what you're actually paying for the garbage and trash program, which also includes the leaf program, taking the wood waste to the landfill with your water bill, showing you're a trash-paying customer. And of course, that also currently includes the citywide cleanup, which I want to change, and we'll be talking with you sooner than later about doing something with that, because I think with the cart program, that opens the door to making maybe the citywide cleanup truly a bulky item-type program.
I look forward to having that conversation.
No doubt, no doubt.
So.
Those are proposed.
It'll probably be the next council meeting before you'll actually make that choice.
I've got one more question.
Ms. Betty?
For him.
Can you?
Can you put?
Just go, go ahead, go ahead. Just go ahead and ask your question. Go ahead.
Are you limited to what you can put in the cans?
Okay, her question is, are we limited to what we can put in the cans?
We do have a frequently asked question and answer sheet put together. We do not have it yet on the website, we need to be working on that, but the intent of the program, by going to the carts, is to, again, reduce the number of nuisances, help clean up the appearance in the city, and it's also to try to save the wear and tear on employees, injury claims and such. But in that program description, it's still intended really to be the same type of program it was prior. In other words, before, you weren't allowed to put auto parts into your waste stream, you're not allowed to put auto parts in there now. Before, you were not allowed to put construction lumber or railroad tie sections, you're not allowed to put those in the cart. You're not allowed to put liquids.
No bags of leaves?
Basically, it's the same program as what it was. If you do have an over, a larger cart, things like hoses, and you're cleaning out your garage, there will be things that you'll be throwing away that will fit in your cart that you would not likely put into a garbage can unless you're willing to put a trash tag on it, so the materials will be virtually the same as what you can throw away.
We just bought a house, and we went over and looked at it, and it was trash everywhere in the house and the yard, just garbage, just everything, plus leaves up too. And if you hire somebody to bring one of these big things out, it's hundreds of dollars. So I was hoping that each week or so, you'd bring some.
Well, if you have a larger cart that goes beyond what you normally generate with your normal garbage stream, then you'll have room in your cart on a weekly basis to put some additional material that you're wanting to get rid of. Again, it's, it's the same limitations as far as the type of things you're going to throw away, but you certainly opened the door for quantity. And one thing that's not shown on the proposed monthly fee is that you discussed raising the price of the trash tag from its current $2 to $4. So if you consider the fact that you're paying $3.25 more to step up to the next size cart.
Thank you, sir.
That's definitely lower than if you have during that month, you have to buy one trash tag, you've now spent more money than you would have if you simply would have stepped up to the next size cart.
And, Don, this is something you'll probably bring up when we get to the fee scheduling, but the trade-out, cart trade-out, the waiver period there initially, we're going to have that conversation in the schedule, right?
Yes, we will have that conversation. There's a difference of opinion.
The resolution's going to get presented without a waiver period, and, and I'm doing that because Don has told me, other communities don't do this. If you just, you choose the cart size you want, and if you're going to change later, you're going to need to do it. Now, that's still up for your discussion if you want to change it, but there, there's a lot of hesitation from them to do something different than what other communities are doing.
My other question is, is, so the guidelines that we've got for this program is everything has to be in a bag inside of these carts, correct?
Well, I, I've struggled with that, and what, in the question and answer list, first I went from everything must be in a bag to be in the cart. I don't like to create rules that makes violators of everybody. Oh, I've got a garden hose, they don't expect me to put that in the car, a bag, I'm just going to throw that in there. I've got a lamp, I'm going to throw that in there. Why should I put it into a bag?
That was my question, is bulk.
So, to me, currently, and we can discuss this more, I think it's the things that are like food-related, flour, rice, baking materials, food, vegetable oils, meat, dough, vegetables, leftovers, those types of things that spoil, go putrid, they give off moisture, they attract insects, they, they give off odors, those types of things definitely should be in bag. If you're throwing away newspaper, which you shouldn't be, you should be recycling, do you need to put that inside of a bag? Certainly, if the lid is open, it may be subject to blowing away, but I guess I distinguish between garbage and what I would call trash, things that are not biologically going to break down and be a problem. And so currently, the answer that I put together was that, is that these things that give off liquids, odors, attract insects, vermin, that type of thing definitely should be sealed bags. Loose materials, I don't know that that's necessary.
I think that's a good call, Don. You know, we're trying to reduce our reliance on plastic, and then we're telling people to put more in the, in the waste stream. I, I agree with that.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Counsel? Let's vote. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Sweet. Number eight?
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving a retrofitting of the fleet of Burlington, Iowa solid waste rear load packers by Kilbert Equipment LLC with cart tippers.
Second.
Got to move in second. Mr. Fitting?
Well, this is to retrofit, retrofitting, did you catch that? I'm kind of retro. Anyway, this is to put cart tippers on the back of our existing rear-loading fleet, and it's what they call semi-automated collection. It is not the fully automated truck that has the claw that goes out and grabs that. There are many contractors and private firms in even cities that do, if they don't start out, they eventually evolve from semi-automated to fully automated. Now, I did talk with one truck supplier here since the last time we met, and I was trying to get from him the cost difference between a fully, a brand-new fully automated truck, which there is a truck in the budget for this current fiscal year, and I wanted to know what the cost of a fully loaded, two-cart tipper rear- know what the cost of a fully loaded, two-cart tipper rear-load truck is compared to a fully automated claw-type truck. And they said it'd probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty thousand, which I thought was a little bit low. There's a lot of things to consider about a fully automated truck. They cost more money, the maintenance costs are higher, they don't last as long, they have to be replaced sooner than rear loaders. You can't pick up furniture and things like that. So they have a specialty use, but of course, typically you'll see fully automated trucks will ultimately reduce the size of your staff over time, which can save money from, for labor and for benefits. So I'm going to be asking them to give me a quote, a bid for both types of trucks, just to see where they're at, because I think eventually, if not sooner than later, I think the city will see at least some fully automated truck or trucks on the routes. Now, fifty percent of our collection is in alleys and fifty percent are curbside. Typically, they're used in curbside, but if you have wide alleys, they also commonly can be used in alleys as well. We have a lot of old alleys and a lot of narrow alleys. I've visited YouTube for a type of fully automated truck. I believe it's called the Helping Hand Arm. I'm not sure if that's the price that they were giving me on the truck when they talked about the difference, but it is a type of truck where the arm goes out, it grabs, it pulls it straight back into the truck, and it raises it up and tips it, and the cart does not go higher than the roof line of the truck. So if the truck can pass through the alley, it's not like you're going to swing up and catch wires or anything like that. And I think that it would have potential. They also have trucks that have arms on both sides. So some communities, I think in West Burlington, they drive down the alley one way, they make a U-E, and they drive back down the alley the second way. So they're making two passes, which puts wear and tear on your roads or on your surfaces. But the trucks are expensive and they require a big learning curve to use, learn how to use them.
I always thought the Helping Hand was hamburger helper, Don.
Oh.
Don, one thing I wanted to point out, and the reason I wanted to point out is because I think in the media last week it wasn't accurate, but the, the media reported that we were paying sixty-eight thousand dollars per truck to have them fitted, where the actual total cost is sixty-eight thousand dollars for all the trucks.
Right, that's right.
So I wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
That's for the entire fleet.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Yep.
Questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Good? Good. Don, thank you very much. Kathleen?
Thank you, Don.
Let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. This is the time we will receive comments from the audience. Is there one, anybody that's not wearing Chicago Cubs gear?
Go Cubs.
Yeah, go Cubs, number one, right? The number one now. Basically, that I want to wish all you and the Westlake Happy Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Hope you had a good time, didn't get too wild. This is why we celebrate Fourth of July, we're able to sit here and debate and do all this, this is why our founding fathers did. I'm concerned about the, I kept quiet a long time because I thought it was good, but this TIF program, we just had, you spent all that money for Siemens, and now that's been bought out, and I wonder, you know, companies don't stay long anymore in a, in a city. You're lucky if they stay more than twenty years or ten anymore. And that's my concern, you put all that money into them, and then they either bought out or they leave, and it's just like realtor, it's like the Siemens is going to be like a white elephant, and it's going to be very hard, very difficult. You've got another being out there that's empty that was built when they first made their business park. But that is my concern, but another thing is, I still say it'd be nice to have Cascade Bridge. I got ten dollars to put on it, but it'd still be nice to have that, have a branded bridge there. And yes, Cubs number one, yes, go Cubs, go, right? You all have a nice night.
You must be a Mayor's Award winner, and you know, we can't have conversation back and forth, but I do want to say this, that one building out there that you said was empty, it's not empty.
Oh, it's not?
It's storage space. They, they warehouse in there, so.
Yeah, but I'm concerned that that's what's going to happen, the Siemens building is going to be there empty for another fifty, sixty years.
Let's hope not, buddy.
I hope not, but you all have a nice night.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good.
Even in your Cubs gear.
Lordy, he's nice, beautiful, peace, people.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? I see none. You guys have been fantastic tonight. Thank you so much. Ms. Betty, did you have a comment?
If I don't have a comment.
Well, nobody's going to be able to hear you. I just want you to know now, th- these are comments, we can't answer questions because this isn't on the agenda, but you can make whatever comment you want, maybe we can even give you some answers.
We've recently been going around looking at the houses, you know, the ones from the city and other people, and I, the ones that the city bought, it was in the paper that they bought up some dilapidated houses and going to try to auction them or sell them or tear them down. I don't understand, because we went around looking at them, what we could get in, or look through the window, or grass that high to, you know, go through the jungle of the yard. Who's responsible for the condition they're in? The people that lived there and left it, or the city that owns it now? It seems like if it was shoveled out and cut, you could get more for it and quicker, and then he's going to have to be responsible for getting rid of all that stuff? Have anybody even looked at them places?
I hear what you're saying.
Have anybody went and looked?
I've seen them.
And how did they get that way? Is that a drug situation? Is that a poor people situation? And it had children, police school toys pushed off in the trash? So children was living in those conditions. So how did it get that bad? I know you can't answer questions, but it's just.
You frustrated, I understand.
And who is responsible? Now that you're the landlord, are you responsible to clean them up, get them, you know, get them, and they're, think of the neighbors. They got to live with the roaches, the rats, the mice is coming over to them.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
So who's responsible?
Tell you what, you hold tight after this being's over with, and I'll tell you who's responsible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, hon. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. You guys have been wonderful, even that guy. Okay, let's wrap it up. Mr. Tisland?
We're having a public open house on downtown planning. Our Burlington area-wide plan, we had consultants come before the Planning Commission and Council previously to give an update on some planning activities they're doing downtown. This is through the EPA Brownfield grant that we received. We previously had a public open house last winter, looking at some catalyst sites for downtown, so they want to discuss these further, where they're at in the planning process and some of the, show some of the plans they have for the Dresser Rand site, Warehouse District area, riverfront, and get additional input on the actual plans that they have. So it's input on the plans and designs for what's possible for these sites, so we really want people to come out and give that input on what they've designed so far, whether they like it, whether they have different ideas, whether they don't like it. We had a decent turnout last time, so we're hopeful that people will come out again. These are sites that are hopefully ripe for development or ripe for redevelopment or different things could go on on these sites, so we really want input from the community on that, including council if they're available.
What is, what is the date?
It's either, it's either not a, not a Friday or not the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, Tuesday, July twenty-fourth. That is a error, yeah.
July twenty-fourth, okay.
Yeah, that's an error. Tuesday, July twenty-fourth at five-thirty at the Burlington Public Library. So we will get, it's going to be posted on our website and Facebook pages here this week, but apologize for that error on that screen, but it is next week, Tuesday at the Burlington Public Library, five-thirty till whenever people are done giving their comments, but we want everyone to come out that's available. And if you want additional information, we do have a website, burlingtonbrownfields.com that people can go to as well.
I'd just like to reiterate what Mr. Tisland said, that if you do have something you want to say on that, that'd be a great time to, to show up and let your voice be heard, so I encourage you to do that. Is that all you have, Mr. Tisland?
Yep.
Kathleen, you got anything going on? Okay. Councilwoman?
So there's no meeting next Monday, but there is the police station open for tours. I don't know if you want to mention something on that, four to seven. And then also next Wednesday at five-thirty at the Burlington Public Library, there is a meeting on Save Zion School. If you're not familiar with it, Zion is a limestone structure built in eighteen forty-six that housed students until nineteen sixties, and we're in the process of saving it, and it's going to be an interpretive center eventually. They'll put a new roof on it, new floor, so come check it out, five-thirty next Wednesday.
Good deal, good deal. Councilman?
We had our little Friday Fest fundraiser, the Dunk Tank, a couple of things. Annie, definitely her fans had the best arms and they were most accurate, she was dunked non-stop. Matt and I had a great time also assisting those ones, and maybe we're off just a little bit, but we raised money and the council people have their funds, they're going to go to their various charities and drop those funds off, so.
Raised almost three hundred dollars, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, we did. It was for a first-time event, pretty good.
And then we had an hour and a half?
Had an hour and a half, so I appreciate everybody that came down and showed up and supported us on that event. It was a lot of fun, so. And thank you, the council members, I know you were out of town running. Seed Money Shane was there giving cash out to people to throw at Matt, which was fun to watch.
It was awesome.
Anyway, it was, it was a good time.
All right. Is that all you have, sir?
That's it.
Okay. I just want to recognize Victor tonight, who dropped off my B-Town Block Party T-shirt. They're still, they're still going on, and they're just trying to get the kids out to the parks. There's one, it's every Thursday from six to eight, free food, free entertainment, et cetera, et cetera. It's a good time. Gladys White Park, at Saunderson Park, and at Stone Gardens, Stone Gardens. So I'm there every Thursday, well, I'll be there pretty much every Thursday for the duration, serving up food, that sort of thing. So we encourage the kids to come out, have a good time, and, and this is, they're going to be giving away all sorts of things, and I just got a T-shirt, so I'm feeling pretty good about that. But if you don't have anything going, come on out and check it out. And adults, if you want to, if you want to participate and do something positive with, with some youth, make a connection, plant some, some good seeds into this community, they will come back and, I'll tell you what, it can be quite rewarding. Also, the Dunk Tank, you got that? The City Hall, we're going to have a basketball team, the Gus Smacker, is that the Gus Smacker?
Yeah, Gus Smacker.
Yeah, Gus Smacker was a three-on-three tournament that's going to be coming here. City Hall has a basketball team, and we're just looking for people to come out and support. The City Hall are ballers. I am the coach, coach and captain of the team, and Peanut Butter's going to be playing, our city manager is playing, and Mayor Pro Tem is also playing.
I need basketball lessons like ASAP.
That's right, and we shoot nothing but three pointers, so it's going to be exciting. We're just encouraging people to come out and support us, and we're going to have really nice-looking jerseys, so no matter how ugly our game is, we're going to look good. So we just want to encourage people to come on out, and if you still haven't signed up for that, I'm not, I don't think it's too late, I think you can still sign up if you want to get in on that action, and we're taking on all comers if you're under the age of eight. We will, we will take you down, so.
Thank you.
Looking forward to that. That said, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, of course. So this Wednesday is the last lunchtime, Burlington Lunchtime Chamber Music Series concert, and it's only thirty minutes. You know, it's, it's free little concert, you should come out and have your lunch, and it's at churches.
The bus action massage your brain is at the loft.
No, it's the Methodist, yeah, it's loft, the church.
Okay.
Associates loft. Sorry. And then Saturday is a very busy day. There's two great events that I love to just watch and, and participate in the other. The first is Boots versus Badges.
Oh, yes.
And that's Saturday, July twenty-first, and starts at ten AM at the baseball park. I don't know if you want to speak more on it, I haven't really heard too much. I know it's not on the events calendar for greater Burlington, which is strange.
Any predictions to victories, what we want to know?
Yeah, who's, are you, what, what is your position? What are you playing?
I usually play outfield, but last year it was pretty pathetic, the fire department put up very little effort, and we kind of whooped them pretty bad, so I don't know if they're going to come back after last year, but.
Probably not.
We sure, we sure appreciate their, their coming out and letting us whoop up on them for a little while, but it's, in all seriousness.
Last year was pretty pathetic.
It's also a great event, but every year, Cale Heitmeyer, who works for the fire department, is very, very passionate about this fundraiser, and he does it every year for a, some cause, and he picks the cause or has a group that picks the cause, and this year it's for one of our officers that has cancer. He's a, he's been fighting cancer probably for about the last year and a half, almost two years, so it's, it's going to be a great event. We always have fun out there, and we also have, have a little rivalry going on, but I predict a strong finish again this year, so.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So that's.
That's how it's done.
That should be a good one. And then also, we have a very vintage market, which is coming back again this year, and it's just getting bigger and bigger. It's taking over like the entire downtown, it's crazy. That's from, that's also on Saturday, and that goes from nine to four, so, you know, you can go between the two events. That's all I have, thanks.
Mr. Rinker?
I have nothing.
Okay, but you reserve the right to come back with something later.
Oh, boy.
That's what, that's what, she always say, okay.
What name did you put on the back of my shirt?
I'm sorry, what was that? What name? On the back of, everybody has a name on the back of their shirt. She's Peanut Butter, I'm Mayor McCheese, her shirt says M.P.T.Twan, and then his shirt says Point Guard without the D, because he's too short to be a point guard, or he doesn't play defense, either one, you can take your pick. And his number is, I'm number one, she's number four, she's number three, and Jim is number one-half. This is going to be a great time.
Thanks, thanks for that.
You want to talk about your number one-half?
Also, because of the new police department, we, we've kind of been going through a lot of processes here. This is one of the final ones, the open house, like the councilwoman had mentioned, but if, if citizens want to come down and see our facility, we're going to offer a couple different times. It'll be July twenty-third from three to seven PM, and July twenty-fifth, and that's a Monday night, next Monday, and next Wednesday night from three to seven both nights. You'll get an opportunity to come down. We're going to try and do guided tours, and it's kind of hard for us to determine how many people are actually going to show up at what time, so if everybody, everyone that does want to come see it is just patient, we'll get you through the building, probably ten, fifteen at a time, and try to show off what we did with the building and, and what we plan on doing and, and the processes that we've changed. So everybody needs to come out and take a look, and if, if you want to come see it again, you go, y'all are welcome to come.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
All right, you do have a groundbreaking next Monday night, four-thirty, for the indoor rec facility, immediately.
It's at four-thirty at four, I wrote down four.
Well, you can be there at four, and, and maybe that would be it, but I have four-thirty, and maybe it, so now I feel whether I need to question what the time that I have for it, but I had four-thirty.
You're probably correct, I had the police time wrong, too.
Please continue, Chair Maker.
Thanks.
It's at four-thirty.
Thank you. So that will be at the site where they will be building that immediately east of the outdoor rec plex. Nick, you had an item to bring up?
Mine's not so carefree. As you see here, this is the sewer infrastructure down at the, between the lift station and the auditorium, right at Valley Street in front. As you may have noticed, there's a fairly sizable hole down next to the Burlington Short Line Railroad. The situation or the problem that we have is that we have a fairly big hole in the side of, if you throw up the next one to kind of show what I'm talking about. So running down there is the old arch sewers of the Hawkeye. The reason why there's two chambers is when they originally built the town, they built one, and that, that chamber was not large enough or adequate, so they built one immediately adjacent to it. Well, as you can see, I've penned in there, there's a hole in the side of that. It is right below where Burlington Short Line Railroad tracks are. We, we've called an engineering firm on hand to try and help us deal with the situation. We don't know what the fix is going to be exactly. We don't know what the fix is gonna be exactly, but we know that we have to try and get something done immediately. So, it'll be coming at, it'll be coming at us, it won't come to council, it'll be an emergency repair. I should have a recommendation by nine o'clock tomorrow morning, so.
Was this, was this as a result of the rain event from the other night?
No, not specifically. I, Burlington Short Line Railroad is doing some inspections along the grade crossings, and they noted a voided area. This was last Friday morning, the, they pulled the panel for the crossing, we did some investigation, pulled back another, another part of the driveway there, we put some rock in there, we put six to eight ton of rock in there.
Jeez.
And then after the big rain event, it completely disappeared, so it ended.
It walked it?
Correct. So, it's in the Hawkeye, or it's probably in the river now, but we know that we have an issue, there's still river water in there, so you can't really see the full extent of the problem. So, hopefully it's just this isolated area, but we're gonna have to try and get something figured out pretty quick.
What's your cost?
Cost?
Yeah.
I don't wanna throw a number out there and get pinned to that.
Good idea.
I think it's higher than the number that I came up with earlier.
Between one hundred and five hundred thousand dollars is my guess.
Is it, okay.
I think it's closer to the five hundred thousand by the time it's done.
And this is come, this would come out of?
So, we have a miscellaneous sewer rehab, and I think that this next year we had budgeted five hundred thousand for that, for the current year, and we've pretty much just ate it up with this one project.
Where did the, where did the sewer project that was near true value, where did that come out?
That came out of previous year's fiscal, but it was the same line, it was the same account line, okay?
Yeah.
Where, where's, where's it at on there?
It is the, as you see the pink line come across, that is, that's the force main that comes across the front and valley and darts across to the lift station.
Okay.
It is to the north and east of that. It's kinda confusing because the sewer system, the, the sanitary system is inside of the Hawkeye box, it is, the laterals come in and then they shotcrete around it. So, the lines are trying to represent that they're on top of each other.
Okay, got it.
But at, at one point, then you see the sanitary sewer also overflows, it's, market is still a combined sewer, so when it has significant events, it kicks out into the box.
Okay. The, the area where the hole has been created, is that an air, could the hole have been created as a result of the load from the short line?
It's really the hole is to. It's indeterminate at this point, I mean, you're talking about a sewer box that's a hundred and twenty years old.
And the hole is actually to the wet, just to the west of it, too, it's not immediately under.
Correct.
So, it's, that, it is difficult, but you, you can look at other, similar to the line we have up by Angular, you had the break of four or five years ago on Central Street, then we had the one right next to High V that occurred this year. You get some of these older lines and you don't know what you're gonna have happen as time goes on. Reason it, or part of the reason you got such an indeterminate for what this can cost, you don't, for one, you don't know the extent, but with this being adjacent to the railroad, you have their, their, the short line is compromised, they can't run right now on the track. And for them to service not just the, their facilities north of there, but to be able to service their other short line customers to the, on the west side of town, they need to be able to use that track. We have to get it to where, do a.
And currently, there's a completely voided area underneath the whole section of track.
So, we have to get, do some level of a short-term immediate repair if possible, so that they can get train traffic in and out, and at the same time then come up with more of a long-term repair.
The conditional plan is to temporarily fix it. There is no guarantee that I know that that will hold up for any certain period of time, but at some point to run temporary track through what is the parking lot between the auditorium and port, to then hook up for, they have, they have a spur line, too, and then swing it around, and then that way we can permanently fix. The best way to do it is to cut the cap off of the old arch and then put a new concrete cap on top of it. But that means a month at a minimum in best conditions. The river's at fourteen foot now, it is this far from the top of the arch. So, I mean, it, it backs up a significant ways, even at lower, at relatively lower river levels.
If the water backs up, is it gonna back up into that parking lot on the backside of our footwell?
If it, if the river, if.
If the water level comes up.
Correct, if the, if the river level were to come up.
If they're gonna back up into the Hawkeye and then essentially make its way into that parking lot, compromising.
It'd have to head's go in or something.
Coming back.
They'd have to ring it.
Okay.
Well, luckily, the river.
Is on the way down.
It's on, it's on the way down.
In order to have it all the way down to try and get inside of it and figure out what's going on, you're talking eight, nine foot.
Yeah. And you'll get there in September, but no, no.
A couple of months away.
At least. On a good note, Mount Pleasant Street Bridge has started construction, or deconstruction, rather. They, this contractor is pretty, pretty ready to get this thing going, so they've already removed several, several spans of bridge decking, so they're, they're ready to move. And signage has gone up, and they are the standard MUTC guideline signage. I've already heard some complaints about whether or not Mount Pleasant Street is open or not open. Unfortunately, we can't allow for the city to put up signs all over the place that Business A is still open or that this road. The best thing that I can come up with is that we're gonna put a, a sign that says Mount Pleasant Street Closed at Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, something to that effect, that the, it's actually closed at the bridge.
Is there gonna be any discussion? I had somebody ask me if we were gonna cover up, or if we were going to try and save the Art Deco railing that's on that.
I know the railing is being removed, we had a conversation with the contractor today. That wasn't me, but it was Jesse, and I, we passed that message along.
But we're gonna take that off and attempt to repurpose, reuse, offer that to people in the community so that they can repurpose, reuse.
I, I know there's been some asks for it.
Same thing I did.
But, at, at the same time, it was not bid out that way. Contractors, when they bid out something like that, take it as an item that they think is theirs to then turn around and salvage. I mean, that's how they end up making some of the, there's a lot of steel underneath the bottom side of that. So, that, that's part of what they bid. So, to take that, I don't know what that means from a change order perspective, to then pay the contractor for that railing.
Fair enough.
So, I mean, if we're prepared to do that, then I don't know, I don't know what that answer is, you know? If, if we wanted to change order that to pay for that railing to then have it, I, I don't know if we want it.
It was brought up to me, too, about, you know, are we able to?
Can't you just have a citizen contract the contractor, contact the contractor?
Correct, and I have that contact if they want to.
Good.
That would be the easiest solution for me.
Yeah, good.
Oh, and Agency Street West will open up here shortly. I don't know that it will be tomorrow, but they will start doing some of the striping tomorrow.